Call this meeting to order, and everyone rise for the pledge.
Today we have Assistant Chief from the Dalton Fire Company, Ron Statnick. He started his fire service way back before I was born, I think. He's a very dedicated and loyal firefighter, and we need a lot more people like Ron. So, thank you.
Are you leading us to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all?
Thank you, Ron. Thank you for coming down.
Thank you. Looking for a motion for the approval of the reading of the minutes?
I make the motion to waive the approval, or waive the minute, the reading of the minutes, sorry.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Proclamation presentation, 200053. Proclamation declaring March 20th, March 2020 is Colon Cancer Awareness Month, and March 26th is Casual Day in Lackawanna County. Here to speak on this is Laura Tool.
Good morning, and thank you for the opportunity to help raise awareness about the importance of colorectal cancer screening. This is our 17th year for Casual Day, which stands for Colorectal Cancer Awareness Saves, Rather, Unlimited Adult Lives. March is Colon Cancer Awareness Month, but we like to make the point that our efforts to raise awareness about the importance of screening is a year-long effort. Colon and rectal cancers are one of the most frequently diagnosed cancers in northeastern Pennsylvania, with our incidence rates about 11% higher than the rest of the country, and our mortality rates are about 12% higher. And colorectal cancer is one of those cancers, one of only four cancers where adherence to routine screening can save your life. Nearly 515 case, new cases are diagnosed annually in northeastern Pennsylvania, and about 200 individuals die each year in our neck of the woods. That's Lackawanna, Luzerne, Monroe, Pike, Susquehanna, Wayne, and Wyoming Counties. But colon cancer is preventable. Colon, as I said, Casual Day, this is our 17th year. You can participate by purchasing a tee-shirt, a wristband, and/or a pin, and really the point of Casual Day, the month-long awareness, is to help encourage casual conversations about the importance of colorectal cancer screening. We've had individuals over the year talk to us about how wearing a tee-shirt has generated the discussion about colon cancer within the family. You know, just really, a few generations past, cancer wasn't spoken about openly, especially colon cancer, and it's helped raise awareness about if you do have a family history of colon cancer, or a history of polyps, or a family history of polyps, that colorectal cancer screening is even more important for those individuals. So we encourage people, again, to talk with their healthcare provider about what type of colon cancer screening is right for them, based on their personal and family history, when they should begin that screening. The age of screening for average risk is age 50. Some national guidelines have actually moved that forward to age 45, because we are seeing individuals younger than age 50 being diagnosed with colon cancer. And if you have, as I said, a personal or a family history of colon cancer, or a family history of polyps, you should perhaps begin screening earlier than the age of 50. So again, I want to thank you for this opportunity to help raise awareness, and know that all of the proceeds for this event go towards our year-long efforts to help raise awareness about colon cancer screening, and also help go towards our navigation screening program that helps low-income individuals that may or may not have insurance but may have other barriers to screening get screened for colon cancer. In 2019, we helped facilitate the completion of over 250 colon cancer screenings through that particular navigation screening program. If you're interested and participate, you can visit our website, www.cancernepa.org, or contact us at 570-941-7984. And again, I appreciate the opportunity to help raise awareness about this important public health issue.
Thank you. The Board of Commissioners has a proclamation for you. Commissioner Dominic is going to read it.
Whereas colon and rectal cancers are one of the most frequently diagnosed cancers in northeastern Pennsylvania, with incidence and mortality rates in some areas as much as 12% higher than the US average. Whereas about 75% of new cases of colon and rectal cancer occur in patients of average risk, and approximately 515 new cases are diagnosed, nearly 200 patients die from colon cancer each year in the counties of Lackawanna, Luzerne, Monroe, Pike, Susquehanna, Wayne, and Wyoming combined. Whereas the Northeast Regional Cancer Center has been easing the burden of cancer in northeastern Pennsylvania for over 28 years through community and patient services, hospital and practice support services, and cancer surveillance programs specifically designed to meet unique needs of our region. Whereas on Thursday, March 26, 2020, the Northeast Regional Cancer Institute will sponsor the 17th Annual Casual: Colon Cancer Awareness Saves Unlimited Adult Lives Day. Casual Day was, whereas Casual Day was established by the family of Helen Phillips, who fought a courageous battle with colon cancer and died in the summer of 2002. Now therefore, we, Jerry Natariani, Debbie Dominic, and Chris Shermack, Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, do hereby recognize March as Colorectal Cancer Month, and urge residents to be screened for early detection of colon cancer, and participate with the support, the Northeast Regional Cancer Institute, in its colon cancer awareness efforts, and proclaim March 26, 2020, as Casual Day in Lackawanna County.
Thank you. Opportunity for public to address the board on agenda items only. Okay. Ordinance First Reading, 020069.
In ordinance amending ordinance 239, creating and establishing the Lackawanna County Land Bank, whereas the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners established the Lackawanna County Land Bank by ordinance number 239, hereinafter referred to as establishing ordinance, which was adopted and approved on June 17, 2015, whereas the establishing ordinance provided for membership on the board to include the Transportation Planning Manager for the Lackawanna County Planning and Economic Development Office. And whereas the Board of Commissioners desires to amend the establishing ordinance to provide for the appointment of a designee of the Lackawanna County Planning and Economic Development Office to be appointed by the Board of Commissioners. And whereas the Board of Commissioners believe it is in the best interest of Lackawanna County to amend the establishing ordinance as set forth herein, now therefore, the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna hereby ordains as follows. Section 1, that section 3.3b of Lackawanna County Ordinance 239 be hereby amended to read as follows. A designee of the Lackawanna County Planning and Economic Development Office to be appointed by the Board of Commissioners. Section 2, that section 3.4 of the Lackawanna County Ordinance 239 be hereby, is hereby amended to read as follows. 3.4, term of board members. After expiration of the terms of the initial of the large, at-large board members, the term of the office for appointed members of the Board of Directors of the Lackawanna County Land Bank shall be five years. The county commissioner or their designated member of the Board of Directors of the Land Bank shall serve until the end of their term in an office, and the designee of the county Development Department of Planning and Economic Development shall serve so long as they hold the position with the county or is replaced by the Board of Commissioners. Section 3, all the other provisions of Lackawanna County Ordinance 239 shall remain in force and effect. Section 4, if any section, clause, provision, or portion of this ordinance shall be held to be invalid or unconstitutional by any court of competent jurisdiction, such decision shall not affect any other section, clause, provision, or portion of this ordinance, which shall remain in full force and effect. Section 5, this ordinance shall be effective 10 days after adoption. This was the first reading.
That was only the first reading. It requires no action by the board at this point. Thank you. Resolution 200070, approving accounts payables.
The Lackawanna County General Fund number is 298645298974, inclusive totaling $2,744,935.30. Electric fund transfers, including all payroll accounts totaling $4,357,769.98.
Accept the motion approving the current payables?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, resolution 200054, approving CDBG modifications. Here to speak on that is Economic Development Director Brenda Sacco.
Good morning, Commissioners. This resolution is authorizing the submission of a CDBG modification to the PA Department of Community and Economic Development. This modification is transferring fiscal year 2014 CDBG funds from the Mayfield Borough Demo and Clearance Line item to the Street Improvement Line to complete the Jefferson Township Perry Road Project. This resolution is a requirement of the CDBG program, which ensures that there is citizen participation in the use of the funds. Any questions?
Board have any questions for Brenda Sacco?
I do not.
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna is hereby authorized to submit a modification for the following Lackawanna County Community Development Block Grant Program to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development. One, Lackawanna County Community Development Block Grant Program for federal fiscal year 2014, the modification will delete the clearance and demolition line for the Mayfield Borough Clearance and Demolition Project. These funds will be transferred to Street Improvement Line Item to complete Jefferson Township Perry Road Street Improvement Project. Be it further resolved, the county has complied with the terms of the Pennsylvania Act 179, and has met all citizen participation requirements in connection with the above-mentioned modifications.
Does the board have any questions?
Nope.
For motion approving, 200054?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. I guess you're standing there.
I'll be here a while.
200055, entering into municipal cooperation agreements.
Be it resolved, the County of Lackawanna is hereby authorized to enter into a cooperation agreements with the following municipalities. Archibald, Lakewood, Clark Summit, Dixon City, Dunmore, Jefferson, Jessup, Mayfield, O'Forge, Elephant, Scott, Taylor, and Troop for the fiscal, federal fiscal year 2018 CDBG program administration.
This resolution is authorizing the county to enter into a municipal cooperation agreement with 13 municipalities. This agreement states that the county is representing the municipality for the administration of the fiscal year 2018 CDBG contract. Again, these are standard required agreements for the CDBG program.
Anyone have any questions for Brenda?
No.
Okay, a motion to accept 200055?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Other question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Resolution 200056.
This resolution is part of a requirement through the CDBG program that we must re-adopt all of our plans annually, and the first one, this resolution is in reference to the Code of Ethics policy, and this policy is affirming that there is proper standard of conduct expected for persons who act on behalf of the public.
Authorizing the re-adoption of the Code of Ethics, whereas the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby adhered to the Code of Ethics as adopted here too. Now therefore, be it resolved, that the County of Lackawanna hereby authorizes the re-adoption and implementation of this plan to ensure compliance with federal and state law.
Any questions?
Board have any questions for Brenda?
No.
Entertain a motion to accept 20056?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Other question? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Resolution 200057.
This resolution is authorizing the re-adoption and implementation of the anti-displacement policy. Again, this is one of our annual plans that we must re-adopt for the CDBG program, and this is a plan that speaks to the relocation assistance for persons displaced as a result of the use of CDBG funds.
Where it is that the public policy of the County of Lackawanna promote anti-displacement policy for federal programs receiving funds from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development, and whereas the Lackawanna County Development Department of Economic Development has developed an anti-displacement policy. Now therefore, be it resolved, the County of Lackawanna hereby authorizes the re-adoption and implementation of this plan and policy to ensure compliance with federal and state law.
Any questions?
Does the board have any questions for Brenda?
No.
Okay. Accept the motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Other question? All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 200058.
This resolution is authorizing the re-adoption and implementation of the excessive force policy. Again, another required plan. The excessive force policy is enforcing our policy on prohibiting the use of excessive force by local law enforcement against individuals engaged in nonviolent demonstrations. And again, this is a plan that we re-adopt every year.
Whereas the public policy of the County of Lackawanna to promote the excessive force policy for federal programs receiving funds from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development, whereas the Lackawanna County Department of Economic Development has developed an excessive force policy. Now therefore, be it resolved, that the County of Lackawanna hereby authorizes the re-adoption and implementation of this plan and policy to ensure compliance with federal and state law.
Any questions?
Board have any questions for Brenda?
Nope.
No.
Okay. Accept the motion authorizing?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Other question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Resolution 200059.
This resolution is authorizing the re-adoption and implementation of the MBE/WBE policy. This is the Minority and Woman Business Plan, and this requires all grantees must promote women and minority-owned businesses.
Where it is the public policy of the County of Lackawanna to promote opportunity for full participation by minority and women's-owned business enterprises in all housing and community development programs receiving funds from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development. And whereas the Lackawanna County Department of Economic Development has developed MBE/WBE policy. Now therefore, be it resolved, that the County of Lackawanna hereby authorizes the re-adoption and implementation of this policy to ensure compliance with federal and state law.
Any questions?
Does the board have any questions for Brenda?
Nope.
For a motion to accept the resolution?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Other question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Resolution 200060.
This resolution is designating a Section 504 Coordinator and Compliance Officer. This policy requires that we have a designated Section 504 officer that assures that there has been no discrimination in providing services based on race, color, national origin, sex, disability, religion, familiar status. And again, it's a required plan.
Whereas the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County approves and accepts the designation of a responsible employee under a Section 504 plan to direct the coordination of efforts to comply with disability discrimination regulations, and to issue public notice for the same. Whereas Lackawanna County must comply with Section 504 in the Rehabilitation Act of 1973, and its implementing regulations and amendments, and will also approve and accept re-adoption of grievance procedures, a public notice process, required employee practices and policies, and the transitional plan. And now therefore, be it resolved, that Board of Commissioners authorizes the re-adoption and implementation of this policy to ensure compliance with federal and state law, and be it further resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County do hereby designate the Deputy Director of the Department of Human Resources as the Section 504 Coordinator and Compliance Officer.
Any questions?
Does the board have any questions for Brenda?
No.
Accept the motion to approve the resolution?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Other question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution 200061.
This resolution is entering into an agreement with PennDOT. This resolution will allow access to the Pennsylvania Crash Information Tool, PCIT, which is a restricted access tool that will be available to recipients of the Highway Safety Grant, allowing access to all finalized but not publicly released data. This allows for more up-to-date information when analyzing the crash data.
Board have any questions for Brenda?
No.
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby enter into an electronic access agreement with PennDOT for the Pennsylvania Crash Information Tool System, and does hereby authorize the Chairman Jerry Natariani of the Board of Commissioners, and Solicitor Frank Rosario to execute the agreement.
Any questions?
Do we have any questions for Brenda?
Nope.
Accept the motion, accepting the resolution.
Make that motion.
I'll second it.
Other question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda.
Thank you, Brenda. Resolution 200062, awarding the Human Services Audit.
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby award the performance of the Human Services Office of Youth and Family Audit to Brian T. Kelly, CPA and Associates, 30 North Scott Street, Carbonell, Pennsylvania, for year ended December 31, 2019, with the price not to exceed $16,800. To speak on this, Tom Durkin.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is just, actually, amounts to a renewal of an engagement with Mr. Kelly's firm, who's been doing the Human Services Office of Children and Youth Services Audit for a number of years now. They do a very, very good job, and we're just asking the Commissioners to go ahead and approve this engagement.
Thank you. Does the board have any questions for Mr. Durkin?
No.
Nope.
Nope, okay. Accept the motion, accepting that resolution?
Make that motion.
I'll second.
Other question? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Resolution 200063.
Approving Office of Youth and Family Services Provider and Professional Contracts. Be it resolved, that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the Provider and Professional Service Agreement for the Department of Human Services Office of Youth and Family Services with Luzerne County Children and Youth and Luzerne County Probation Services, IJIS Institute, and the Friendship House for FY of July 1, 2019 to June 30, 2020. Here to speak on this is Bill Browning.
Good morning, Commissioners. The contract for Luzerne County Children and Youth Services is to assist Luzerne in dealing with a conflict they had with a employee who is a foster parent. Obviously, they can't contract directly with them, so through the state, we've agreed to be the provider of foster care for that service. For Friendship House, it's the Community Navigation Program. This is a framework to help people with disabilities plan and access both natural supports and resources as the life, as the name entails, throughout the life. So, as opposed to dealing just with episodic needs, it's actually planning from youth through their life, and the Friendship House is grant-funded, and so there are no state or county dollars involved in that.
Board have any questions for Mr. Browning?
No.
Okay. A motion, accepting the resolution?
Make the motion.
Second.
Other question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. One more. 200064.
Approving an amendment for the Office of Youth and Family Services. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the Addendum for Professional Services Agreement for the Department of Human Services Office of Youth and Family Services with Lackawanna County Juvenile Probation for forensic counseling for fiscal year July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020. Once again, here's Mr. Browning.
The, this is an addendum to an existing contract. It'll provide for a battery of screening tools to be used to assist juvenile probation in predicting recidivism, and also some service planning.
Board have any questions for Mr. Browning?
I do not.
Okay. Accept the motion. Confirming that resolution?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Other question? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Resolution 200065.
Appointment to the Lackawanna County Conservation District Board. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby appoint the following individual to the Lackawanna County Conservation District Board. Commissioner Chris Shermack, 123 Wyoming Avenue Scranton, one-year term effective immediately to expire December 31, 2020.
Board have any questions? I'll accept the motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it. Other question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Resolution 200066, appointment to the Lackawanna-Susquehanna Behavioral Advisory Board.
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby reappoint the following individuals to the Lackawanna-Susquehanna BHIDEI Advisory Board. Diane Baldi, 821 Columbia Street, Scranton, term to begin immediately and expire on December 31, 2022. James Scott, 514 Old Colony Road, Clark Summit, term to begin immediately and expire on December 31, 2022. Thomas Comerford, 101 Little Spike Way, Scranton, term to begin immediately and expire on December 31, 2022. Be it further resolved, that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby appoint the following individuals to the Lackawanna-Susquehanna BHIDEI Advisory Board. William Burke, 927 Greenfield Road, Moscow, to fill the unexpired term of a vacated position, to begin immediately and expire on December 31, 2020. Commissioner Debbie Dominic Esquire, 123 Wyoming Avenue Scranton, term to begin immediately and expire December 31, 2020.
Does the board have any questions? Accept the motion. Approving the appointments?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it. Other question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Resolution 200067, appointments to Lackawanna County Land Bank Board of Directors.
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County hereby appoint the following individuals to the Lackawanna County Land Bank Board of Directors. Commissioner Chris Shermack, 123 Wyoming Avenue Scranton, term to begin immediately and expire on December 31, 2024. Commissioner Debbie Dominic Esquire, 123 Wyoming Avenue Scranton, term to begin immediately and expire at the end of her elected term.
I'll accept the motion on the resolution, but I am going to have a question. Can I have a?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
My question is, is, at this point, would we appoint a chairman, since it's the? No, Commissioners appoint the chairman.
The bylaws article two.
Is that what, something we should do at this particular meeting? Can we do that now? We should. We can. Okay. All right. On that note, the proper legal way of doing it, I make a motion to nominate Commissioner Debbie Dominic as the Chairman of the Land Bank. Okay. Second?
I'll second.
Other question? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. That's it. On that, motion, motions 200068.
Motion to award the Lackawanna County Gateway Center Roof Repair and Masonry Restoration Contract Number 1, general trades to the lowest responsible bidder, D&amp;M Construction Unlimited Incorporated, for $405,000. Incorporated for $405,000. Here to speak on that is David Johns, a county engineer.
Good morning, Commissioners. This motion is to award the Gateway Center Roof Repair and Masonry Restoration Project to D&amp;M Construction of Dalton. As you're aware, we recently completed a project there for the DA, and in such, we found that after repairing the roof, it warrants full replacement. This includes full replacement of the roof, along with masonry restoration to the parapet and some penthouses on the roof.
This has been an ongoing issue, the leaking of that particular building.
Correct. It has been, Commissioner.
And we spent a lot of money to renovate it.
Correct.
To not fix the roof would be not a wise idea.
You're absolutely correct.
Yeah, okay. On that note, I would accept a motion to approve the motion.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, and second?
I second.
Other question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. Opportunity for the public to address the board. Mr. Antedorme, how are you, sir?
Mr. Antedorme, Madison Township. I voted for every one of you guys, right? Now, I'm trying to figure out how Lackawanna County is up there at the end where me and my bunch, we all voted for you, so you can get in this mess, right? But I'd like to know what it's got to do with Clark Summit. It's all Lackawanna County. But 60 years ago, I could not get a job here being a fireman or nothing in Scranton. Who made them rules? It's still part of Lackawanna County, but you didn't have the same opportunity, right? Nothing changed. And I really think when you're going to raise taxes on the county, that I don't get nothing up there, we don't get nothing up there, it should be on a referendum. Now, I'm assessed a hell of a lot more than $12,000, right? And you know what I'm asking for? My money back. I don't want to complain about my problem. 59 years I've been married, my wife is ill, my daughter's in the hospital, right? A lot of people have a lot of problems. I'm going to be 81 years old. I've got to still try to work some, right? I just slowed down last fall, right? What are you people doing for the end of Lackawanna County? Why is this the hub? Why couldn't the hub be up in Moscow? Why couldn't it be in Madison? It's all Lackawanna County, but we're not recognized. I want a rebate. If you tell me I'm going to get rid of my rebate, I'll tell you how much it is. I'm not happy about it. We should have went along with Debbie there, waited a year. I knew you guys were blessed with a mess. I congratulate anybody who has a pension plan, but why should I pay for it there? When you had a hell of a surplus, when you could have put some of it in from there. That's all I got to say. Ain't coming back no more. God bless you. I want to see you when you get done. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Antedorme.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Commissioners, other business? Mr. Shermack?
None for me.
Commissioner Dominic?
I have nothing.
Okay, I have nothing. I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all.